I'd like to call the regular Board of Alderman meeting for Tuesday, May ninth to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the and the two which stands one nation under God indivisible
liberty and justice for all.
Chris, get a roll call.
Yes, aldermen and women, King.
Here.
Stowe. Adamowski. Tar.
Here.
Cassetti.
Adamowski is here.
I got him.
Okay.
I have King Adamowski and Tar. Cassetti. Is he here?
No, he's not here.
All right, Janetti. Knott.
Here.
Yowman.
Here.
Rivers.
Here.
Mamone.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Blackwell, Delibro, eight present.
All right, I declare quorum. We had one set of minutes from the prior meeting, April 11th. They get a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mamone, second by Knott to approve. Any additions or corrections or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
One abstention, Rivers. All right. Let's see, what do we got next? Public session. So we'll open up the public session. Just a quick reminder, please hold to a three-minute or less time for anything you want to say. It's not a Q and A. And if you can identify yourself, name and address, just for the public record, that would be great. But we'd love to hear from you. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Second call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Third and final call, anyone from the public?
Hi.
I wish to speak.
Go ahead.
All right, I apologize for the delay. This is Dan Bosquez. My phone is not working. I'm using my wife's and showing up as Jen Bosquez.
Go ahead.
I know that on the agenda, my name is listed there for communication, but I'm not sure if I should speak during the public session or if I'm going to have an opportunity during the communication portion. So I apologize for that.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to bring that up later in the meeting. So if you're going to hang around, that should come pretty quick if you want to, if you want. Otherwise, you can speak now if you have, if you're busy.
No, 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 not at all. I'll wait for you guys to prompt me. I just want to make sure I didn't miss the opportunity. My phone's still trying to account right now. So I apologize and thanks for having me here.
All right, thanks. We'll see you in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, next up, I saw we had tooling voices here.
Thomas Egan, fifty-two State Street in Sonja.
Go ahead.
The budget for the city. It's supposed to be adopted by the Board of Alderman by April thirtieth. Today's May ninth. I get this isn't a question and answer session, but maybe somebody can answer why it hasn't been done yet. The other comment that I have for this evening, I still don't know. There's a five million dollar line item for future revenues and our mayor's proposed budget. I don't know what that is. I think that the people should know. That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Josh, can I add a comment to that? Because that was covered during the budget presentation. It was also covered during the budget meeting last night. It was recovered. It was covered during a couple of interviews with Kurt. It was talked about pretty extensively on what that five million dollars is. I know some information, Mr. Federer was asking about that. So there's been several exchanges and several things on the public record with that five million dollars and else. So, Mr. Egan, there's, there's recorded meetings. There's other documentation out there that has what that five million dollars is.
Okay, I see a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but we could figure out where the rest is coming. Fantastic.
Great. Anyone else from the public? It's hard to see on this. Final call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? All right, we will close the public session. And again, Mr. Bosquez will come back when that item comes up. All right, move on to a public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart. Members of the Board of Alderman residents in the great city of Ansonia. Exciting things happening in Ansonia. The excavation and site layout is underway at the splash pad in preparation for the installation of all the new equipment and fire decals. Representing all of our five fire stations, counting down the days. Joe in Chicago, I have already tried my swimsuit on and it fits just fine. Not sure if you two can say the same.
Oh, I have.
All right. Palma Restaurant opens its doors tomorrow at one seventy-one Main Street. We all know how good the food is at Palma. Now you can sit down and enjoy your food in a newly renovated space. Stay tuned for the grand opening. At one sixty-five Main Street will be opening its doors within the week. First floor will be fully occupied with more new tenants. Green USA Builders has already begun abatement work at five oh one East Main Street in preparation for additional residential units. Our State Street project will be expanding its project limits to include North State and Union pending DOT approval. We will get an update on that a little bit later. Demolition will resume on the remaining thirty-five North Main Street structures except for building twelve. Staff will elaborate on that as well. Update on the sports complex. Yay. Next week, geo equipment will be on site to begin constructing the foundations. Munch Bakery at five sixty Main Street will be opening its doors soon with baked goods to satisfy everyone's sweet tooth. Just be careful, Joe in Chicago. It is swimsuit season, all right? As previously mentioned. I know staff will talk more about projects and grants, but I want you to know that just recently we received almost three hundred thousand dollar grant to design and construct the next segment of our River Walk, which will take down, will take us down Olson Drive and along Ansonia Copper and Brass. Finally, speaking of outdoors activities, we are seeing some real nice weather. Good time to get out and enjoy all that we have to offer here in Ansonia. We have a busy Saturday this weekend. The first Paracon all day on Saturday, starting at eleven AM at the Ansonia Armory. There will be over eighty vendors with people from all over Connecticut and beyond attending. Hope to see you there. The Ansonia Animal Shelter Tag Sale at Veterans Memorial Park will be held on May thirteenth from ten AM to three PM this Saturday. I will definitely see you there. There's a fishing derby this Saturday as well. Bring the kids for fun and excitement at Colony Park from nine to twelve. More details are on our Facebook page. That's all for now. Thank you all and God bless you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is Corporation Counsel, John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board, good evening. We have a full deck for executive session, so I'll keep it relatively brief. But I want to follow up on two important projects that are, that are really coming to good results for the city. Number one, short term, our senior center. Quickly approaching, we believe, a June opening date. I want to really give a word of thanks to our team helping things stay on track, including tenure construction, our own Jared Hian, Christine Sansini, and Jeff Coppola, who we've been spending more and more of our time getting updates and seeing completion of elements of the senior center. We feel very positive that the seniors are going to be very excited to see what they've been working on and to see the completed result. You've given, you've gotten little previews here and there over the course of the last month, but really seeing it in person makes all the difference. So again, big thank you to the, to the crew keeping things going. Our staff is taking more and more time to get updates and to make sure we get to that end goal. And you're going to be hearing about the grand opening very soon. And of course, I see Diane Strowman on the line, who's been ever vigilant as the head of our elderly commission and really the senior center commission. They've, of course, been involved from the very beginning. And so big congratulations to Diane and her team at finally being on the verge of seeing the senior center reopened once again. I also want to touch on Ansonia Copper and Brass. Sheila may mention it as well, but this really is occupying more and more time for staff as we see the completion, not only of the first phase of demolition, but a setup to expand far beyond that in terms of bringing the buildings down and achieving remediation, but also really that big horizon of end use. We have interest coming from all corners and we're going to be launching our first bids for potential end users in the very, very near future. This project is going to become real faster, I think, than anybody realizes. The truth of the matter is that space is sorely, sorely needed for manufacturing, for industry, for jobs in the state of Connecticut. And the sixty acres in our downtown represents probably one of the best opportunities for such expansion in the entire state of Connecticut. So we have the state team, you know, D C D, Department of Economic and Community Development on our side, being very excited about the potential. We have many developers getting excited and definitely, you know, as a board, you're really going to be seeing again, the end result of all your hard work to open up this canvas for development much sooner than, than you likely thought. Any questions? I'd be happy to take it, but in the meantime, we have executive session later tonight.
Any questions for Corporation Counsel from the Alderman at this point?
He mentioned Sheila's name in that.
Yep, she's going to follow up.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks.
All we need is Sheila.
Okay.
Oh, John, any updates on the Knicks?
Oh, no.
Not at this time.
Next up, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, President Stewart. Thank you, Alderman Mamone and members of the Board of Alderman. Quick, some quick updates. S H W, as John said, a lot of activity happening on that site as well as the Ansonia Copper and Brass. The remaining buildings, but building twelve is going to be salvaged, but the remain, the rest of the buildings will be, will be tear downs. And building twelve is interesting because we have a manufacturer who is interested in a hundred and sixty thousand square feet and bringing over a hundred employees here to Ansonia. So that's an exciting opportunity. Hopefully, we will have that site turnkey ready. We have applied for over four million dollars in brownfields funds and abatement remediation and roof replacement and windows for that building to make it to make it ready for occupancy. So fingers crossed on that. We're hoping to get some good news on that grant, which will then put two tenants on that S H W site. And that, remember, that's only four and a half acres. So you have fuel cell as well, which will have to fit in around the manufacturer. And so any copper and brass site, we are looking to the bridge replacement and also to some access of possible, possibility of applying for access road funds for Ansonia Copper and Brass, which will run in tandem with our River Walk project. And I think we're seeing a lot of interest in the Ansonia Copper and Brass site. We've gotten a lot of press on a lot of the things we've been doing and especially the bridge replacement. People are looking, potential tenants are looking at that as, you know, will be a tremendous help to, to gain access to the site. So we have a lot of interest in, in Sonya Copper and Brass. And our next, the next grant is the Community Investment Fund Grant, which we will be applying for, and I'll be talking about later on. You have a resolution for that. And I think that's it. I'll have some news. Some news on some other grants next month. And I'll take questions if you have any.
Questions for Sheila from the Alderman?
I have one, Josh, if I can, really quick. Any updates on the sidewalk project on Franklin? Sheila?
Yeah, Joe, so what we've been told, our engineers spoke to DOT, I spoke to DOT, they have a huge drainage issue and project that they have slated for Franklin Street. And so we are trying to see how we can coordinate and not have our sidewalk money go towards a project that will be ripped up when the road gets reconstructed. So we're trying to coordinate, but in doing so, that's, that's taken us out a bit longer than we wanted to be with, with the sidewalks. That road's really in need of a lot of help. And it is a, it is a state road, although we were willing to, mayor was willing to put the money towards fixing the sidewalks because they're in such disrepair. So I will keep this board updated with the state's schedule and you know, we're just looking to get in there and spend our money on the sidewalks to help out.
Well, that's great news to hear that that's on the state's
radar. Yeah, it's, it's in design phase right now, so.
Okay, well, if there's anything that we can do at the board level to, you know, help push that along, Sheila, just let us know.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other questions for Economic Development tonight?
Chicago, nothing?
Do you have any of the sorely?
He's trying on his bathing suit right now, Sheila.
No, I already did that. I did that for a month.
All right.
Sheila, do you have updates for us on the Knicks or even the Miami?
Yes, I do have.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm being saved. Yeah.
When you say the buildings, what number building is that that's on the corner of Main Street and Bridge? I mean, is that one going to come down?
I know. And, and Alderman Adamowski has asked before, and I should have a map to put up. So when I'm talking about these, and I will. Building twelve is adjacent to a building which is on Ansonia Copper and Brass. So it's closer to the rail, rail line. It's away from the street.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, you can't really see it from North Main Street or Main. It's towards the back and all the way, you know, like maybe fifty feet from the rail, rail line.
So is that building that I'm talking about, is that going to come down? Because the corner looked like it was being eaten away.
Oh, you're talking, that is thirty-five Main Street. We don't own thirty-five Main Street. It does, they did finally resolve the owner issues and they have a tenant who wants to move in to one West Main Street and tear down thirty-five Main Street. And we, and we've actually offered our, our demo contractors are assessing that building as a teardown and will give the new owners a an assessment on that and a cost estimate for teardown. That's a really bad building. Yeah, that is not ours at this point. Yeah, I know, needs to come down, slock and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheila, you should make the site map your profile picture for the next six months or so.
I will do that, actually next year. So yeah, absolutely. I think that'd be a better background.
Other question? All right, we'll move on. Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller?
Good evening, Mr. President. I apologize if my voice goes, but just quick, a few things. Number one, budget process is moving along as we've been speaking about since November, December, following the timeline that was established. We met last night with boat and with the finance subcommittee. We were able to get through revenues, explaining where all the revenues are coming from in, in great detail. And then we also discussed debt service, fund balance, and just a few other things. We were able to get about a third of the way through the expenses. I anticipate that at tomorrow night's workshop, we'll be able to probably get through all of the expenses and then we can have a discussion with the members of boat as to how they'd like to proceed. We are absolutely on course for this group to hold their public hearing on the Tuesday after Memorial Day, as we had discussed. That will give residents a good two weeks after boat has made their recommendations to be able to digest that information and then come to the public hearing for a comment and you know, to give you an idea as to direction that they may like to see you guys ultimately go. As a, as a side note, today about three o'clock, I received an email request from the Ansonia Little League for Funding. I did forward that over to you, President Stewart. So if you want to, if you want to put that in for discussion tonight, that would be good. I certainly understand that it is a late communication and you may want to hold off to June, but in the letter, they're looking for some assistance with doing some field repairs and things like that. I think they're just trying to get you know, the field up to snuff to, you know, to finish out the major part of their, their season, you know, through May, June, and then into into July. And then finally, I'm sure some of you have heard some of the big news that's been out there. I was given the privilege by Mary Cassetti to serve on a statewide committee with State Comptroller Scanlon in working with organized labor on updating or I guess recreating the MERS pension system. That's the municipal employees retirement system. That's been its original format for seventy years. I think all of you have heard me rail on about this over one time or another. But over six sessions in the comptroller's office, again, sitting down face to face negotiating directly with organized labor, we were able to come to some concessions to improve the existing plan, but more importantly, come to some agreement that over the summer, we'll work on a true updated governance structure and more importantly, adding a second tier. You know, the initial changes that we've made are going to save the city of Ansonia about twelve point eight million over the next thirty years and statewide municipalities are going to save eight hundred and forty-three million. So it's certainly, you know, it was certainly time well spent. I think it's going to bode well for the future of Ansonia, bode well for the future of all towns and cities across Connecticut, because we're going to be able to better control our pension costs, which in turn we could use to reinvest more in our community, reinvest more in our staff, reinvest more in our infrastructure. So it's, it's definitely positives all around. So with that, I will save the rest of my comments until executive session this evening. But if there are any questions, Mr. President, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions tonight from the Alderman for Kurt?
I will save it until executive session.
And we'll pick up the, the Little League thing. We can pick that up as a late, after we let Mr. Bosquez speak, since he's, he's here. We'll let him go first. We can pick it up after that. Any other questions or comments for for Kurt? All right, moving on, and I see he's already ready, ready to go. Police Chief Wayne Williams.
Just before you, before you get to the chief, Josh, can I just ask one thing of Kurt? I don't know if he has it readily available, but if he can find it before we take up the late communication, I'd just like to know what the fund level is in that line item, if we do choose to fund Little League tonight.
We are currently at fifteen thousand, give or take. It's like fourteen, nine, something.
Yeah.
We have, we have a lot of thousand dollars that we've committed to Pop Warner to pay for helmets, but Pop Warner has to date has not sent us any of their information. So we have not sent them any check. So that money's there, but sort of encumbered. And the Little League request is about four thousand dollars. So this would keep us north of ten thousand dollars in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now.
Wait, 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 hold on. How was there so much, how was there so much in that line? Because there was money that went to soccer already, Kurt. It was money for the cheerleaders. We still had fifteen thousand left in there?
Correct. It was soccer and the cheerleaders who have applied and received payouts. Soccer just got their second payout, I believe, last week or the week before. And again, Pop Warner has not sent in the information that we need this to cut them a check. So we're holding their check. So those are the only organizations that have donated or asked for a request.
That was the first request for Pop Warner, correct?
Thank you. You know what I'm trying to say.
That, that was the first request for Pop Warner, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
There's only been one, so, yep.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll get on that.
All right, again, we're going to take that up in a little bit. So the chief's time is precious. So let's get to him. Welcome. Chief Williams?
Good evening, President Stewart, for all the men and city officials, members of the public. I'm going to try and keep it as short as I can because I saw you do have quite the agenda for executive session. So I wanted to let you know that just this week, we welcomed Officer Fred Reed. He has completed his field training, the academy, made all his requirements, and he is now on patrol on solo status. So I welcomed him this week. I just saw him in the hallway, as a matter of fact. We still have two other officers that are in field training plus another four in the academy that hopefully will be out in June. We are also looking to fill a sergeant's position and two detectives' positions that have been open for quite a while while we try to build back the officer ranks. I know Attorney Marine is probably going to update you later about contract negotiations with the police union, so I'll skip it to him. We are still working on getting our solar signs. I think I might have mentioned in the previous meeting that the state of Connecticut donated two solar powered traffic signs to us for speed enforcement. And it was at no cost to the city. We benefited. It was about ten thousand dollars in donation from the state of Connecticut's DOT program for communities. So those are going to be going up. We've obtained them. We went up. We got the training on them and now public works will be helping us install them on a couple of streets. For our garage here at the police department, Apostle Construction is still working daily on the garage. The vibration of the garage from all the demo work has apparently ceased. They're start, now they're working on some of the more fine work. And from talking to tenant construction, sounds like the project is on pace for when they expect it to be completed. I know you talked about Paracon for city events. We're also working on staffing and preparing for the River Jav Honor Roll Memorial, which is going to be on May twenty-first. We're also working, don't forget about the Memorial Day Parade, which is going to be May twenty-eighth, two o'clock. The Relay for Life is June third at Nolan Field. And then we're also starting to have conversations about the carnival, June twenty-ninth to July ninth at Nolan Field. Last two things on my plate, we are following the legislative session as it nears its end. There are several proposals that are going to impact police operations. So we're waiting to see which new laws are going to be filed, which will be passed and then what their final form is when they're passed. And lastly, just, I want to throw out that we have seen a recent increase in the number of car break-ins and attempted thefts and thefts of certain Hyundai and Kia models. This is a nationwide trend that we're noticing. The use of a club or a steering wheel locking device or an anti-theft security kit being offered by Hyundai can help prevent those thefts. If you go on their websites or you just Google Hyundai or KFF, you can get a little bit more information. But we noticed that we've started seeing an impact on that in our, in our area. I'm open for any questions or comments that might be needed.
Any questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman? All right. I'm sure as soon as I dismiss you, they're going to have ten questions. So I'll give them a second. All right, well, thank you.
I will just mention in the chat, there is a question from Mr. Martinez asking about a stop sign at the intersection of Wakely and Clarkson. And I would just indicate to Mr. Martinez for the record that you'd have to appear before the police commission and make, make that request.
Thank you, Ms. Gem. I just, I just pulled up the comment. Yeah, that would be directed to, he doesn't even have to Thank you, Ms. Jam. I just, I just pulled up the comment. Yeah, that would be directed to, he doesn't even have to appear. He can just write a uh. A um, letter to the Board of Police Commissioners and address it to them at the Police Department sixty-five Main Street. And that will get on to their uh, agenda.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the chief? Going once, twice? All right, we'll move on to uh, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Um, DeBaco.
Uh, good evening, uh, President Schuer, elected officials and uh, members of the public. Once again, I, I do want to uh, respect that you appear to have a very robust agenda, so I'll keep things brief as well. Um, at first, a big thank you to the mayor uh, and the alderman uh, for support of the Board of Education Budget. It's much appreciated and I appreciate hearing the, the support for the budget. Uh, I did wanna let um. You know, the alderman know that right now our students are taking for like the next two weeks uh. That we're taking our state assessments, the smarter balance assessments, grades three through eight. Uh, they'll be busy um, wrapping up the rest of the school year. Our, our last day of school is. Is June seventh and uh, we have graduation set for June tenth, which is a Saturday at nine o'clock in, in the morning. And uh, I hate to let everyone know, but school year is uh, coming to a close, so those little ones. Will have to find things for them to do this summer. Because uh, that's what people keep asking me. Once school's over, what do you guys have planned? So we have our extended school year. And we have some of our summer programs that we'll be running and they'll start, I think, June nineteenth is when they, they'll begin. So uh, if you have any questions, please ask. And uh, I, I'm here to answer them and see how I can help.
Um, yeah, I do. I have one question. Where can I get a jacket like that?
Yeah, um, the mayor got one delivered. I'll, I'll see where I could find one, um, Mr. Rivers. Absolutely.
He's gonna, he's gonna wear it with his swimsuit.
That's right.
Uh, any questions um, for Dr. Joe from the alderman? All right, well, thank you also for coming tonight, taking time out. All right, so in the public official session, we'll move on to committee reports, finance committee.
Make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct, Josh.
Thank you. Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mamon. Second by Yaman, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, uh, Rivers. Any other um, reports, committee reports, subcommittee reports from the um, aldermen?
The only thing I wanted to do tonight, Josh, is uh, get on the books, an ordinance meeting. We have a couple of things we have to do before the uh, the June meeting, so I'll make sure um, the members of the ordinance committee. Um, can meet on a particular night. We can do it via Zoom.
All right, you wanna, do you wanna suggest a date or you just wanna throw, you're just throwing it in the universe?
Yeah, I'm just kind of putting it out there. Um, I'm thinking the week of the twenty-third or the twenty-second, twenty-third. Uh, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
One evening that, that, you know, one night that evening or that, that week. Uh, seven o'clock, something like that. We can do it via Zoom. It should only take about a half hour, I would think.
Yeah.
I'll send, uh, I'll make sure that the um, committee members get a reminder that, you know, who's on that. You can coordinate that. Yeah.
I actually have um, the list in front of me.
Perfect, who's on ordinance?
And uh, to my surprise, I'm on ordinance too. Joe Johnson and Chicago Rivers, Dan. Uh, Dan King, Joseph Canetti. And Bobby Tar.
Hey, there you have it. And Joe is the, Joe Yamman's the chair. You can coordinate the, the meeting.
All right, I'm gonna throw out Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at seven. John, can you make that?
I can.
When you can.
Yep.
Okay, so if, i- i- as long as uh, we can get uh, at least three members, I think we're uh. In good shape. I'd like to try to get everybody, but.
Yeah, I can get them.
Okay.
Can we zoom that possibly?
Yeah, definitely. We'll definitely do it via Zoom, Tom.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, sounds good. Uh, moving on, we got under municipal reports, we have the um, vote recommendations that are in your packet. Motion to accept.
Move.
Motion by Mamon.
Second.
Second by not, all in favor? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Man, it's gonna be a long night, Rivers.
Well, I wasn't here.
All right, so motion passes, thanks. Um. Let's see, where are we at? Tax collector report?
Motion to accept tax collector report.
Motion by Mamon to accept the report. Anyone?
Second. Second.
By Yaman, all in favor? Oppose, one abstention, Rivers.
Yeah.
Motion passive and then the rep, for refunds, uh, and the amount of one thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents if deemed correct.
Motion to approve as stated.
Um, motion by. Who was the second on that?
Yaman.
Yaman, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? One abstention, Rivers. Um, yeah, I'm getting good at this.
Yeah, I know.
We have no accidents and claims and now we have, uh, we have one communication and then we'll, we'll take up the Little League thing after um, as a late. So uh, Dan is still here, I hope. Looking around.
Uh, yeah, he still here.
Okay, so you guys received in your pack, um, a communication um, from. Uh, the Insomnia Historical Commission and the Chair, uh, Dan Batzkez. This was regarding um. The First Sergeant Charles S. Tatten Day. Are there any questions on that? That was a, a well put, uh, put together and thought out. Um, proposal, any?
Thank you, President Schuer. Thank you.
Any questions from the alderman, uh, specifics beyond what you read? All right, uh, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'm uh, I'm, I'm really happy that. That this is coming before the Board of Aldermen. This is something that Ameri Kestee and I have been talking about for well over a year. Uh, Tatten is a, a gentleman from the past that uh. I happened upon. It turns out that not only was he a great Ansonia resident, but he was also present for. Uh, the, the announcement of the emancipation of slavery down in Galveston, Texas. In eighteen sixty-five, so um, direct connection to two really important uh, moments in American history. I, I just think it's appropriate. To uh, duly recognize Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday as. Here in Ansonia, at least as First Sergeant Charles S. Tatten Day. Uh, and I, I have a feeling that it's gonna gain uh, state recognition, recognition as well. Um. But I, I just appreciate the, the opportunity to present the letter before the Board of Aldermen. And like uh, President Schuer says, uh, feel free to ask any questions. I can clarify anything uh, that you'd like. But we're hoping, hoping that a, an official proclamation can be made on the Juneteenth celebration, which is gonna be taking place. This June seventeenth, right next to City Hall by uh. Uh, David Morgan from team, president from team, who has invited us to uh, to be. A part of their Juneteenth celebrations. I think it'd be great for the city of Ansonia. I think it would be great for uh, for all of us, for all the residents. Uh, and everybody here present, I, I hope that you, you see the importance. Of making this proclamation. So I, I don't know the process from this point forward. I don't know if there could be a resolution. That the Board of Aldermen can make either this meeting or the following meeting so that we can have this proclamation. Take place on June seventeenth of next month.
Yeah. So you, you guys have the um, the communication, um, and it's all laid out there for you. Um, I mean, I, I guess what I'd like to see is that we, we vote to accept this and, and uh. And move forward with it, but um, I'm open to suggestions, comments.
Josh, it's Tony's. I, I, I guess just a, a question on that, so. Do we just have to accept this and then the city will put the proclamation out in, in? Name the. You know, the date Sergeant Charles Tatten Day? How does that work?
It'll also be, it'll be Juneteenth regardless, but it, we would also, we would. Uh, also be um, recognizing it as First Sergeant Charles S. Tatten Day.
And I'm also, um, I have a question, I guess a thought. Uh, I'm, I'm also wondering, is it in addition to um. To doing the proclamation and voting on the proclamation, is it possible? And I don't know, Dan, maybe i- if, if you know this, is there a representative of the family that maybe we could possibly uh, give the key to the city to as well?
Well, um, gosh, I, I never thought about that and I, I think that they would be uh, really flattered and I'm kinda humbled to think that. That you guys would uh, would go even further to make that suggestion. Yes, I, by all means, um. Uh, Charles Tatten's great grandson, Raymond Tatten, is still alive. He's eighty-two years old and strong and. Uh, I think he'd be happy on behalf of the family to receive a key to the city for that day. Uh, whether it's a one-day thing or whatever. But yes, the, the answer to that is, is yes, there, there are family members that are very interested. There are also uh, tribal members. Cause Tatten was not only Ansonia's first black police officer, but he was also uh, Native American, uh, just as much as he was. An African-American, so you have uh, people in the community, um. A lot of. People who have uh, their roots in both the African-American and Native American community that would. Be there to support this in addition to his family.
Okay, let's vote, okay?
Yeah, can I make, can I make a motion to, to accept the. Request for the official proclamation and then, you know, Joe, as you mentioned, or Josh, we could take up the. Um, key to the city with the next, uh, put it on the next agenda, something along those lines.
Second.
When we can let, we can let uh, city staff work out the, the fine details on that, but motion. Second by not. Any further discussion?
Josh, I, I just wanted to uh, congratulate uh. Mr. Vasquez on um, the excellent research on a, a very important historical topic.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. And uh, I, I, I'm flattered and I'm honored and I'm also humbled because uh. Tatten is the one who uh, who we're trying to recognize here. And uh, his, his memory was kind of lost for, for well over a hundred years. And it was just by chance that I found it and I was, I had the privilege of transcribing his personal works. I, I know, I'm still flabbergasted at, at uh, not just his uh, his eloquence and penmanship. But the fact that he was there for a lot of what we have read in books and seen in movies. Uh, he was one of the first people to step foot on uh, the green over enrichment upon the, the uh. The surrender of the Confederate Army. Uh, so there's, there's a lot more that I can talk about and I guess we could save it for official proclamation day.
You, you know, I hope you'll consider publishing an article on it. Again, it's, it's an important uh, topic that um. Should not be lost in history.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously, so um, Dan, I would say connect with uh, city staff and, and uh, work out. The fine details on that and that way it gives you a little bit more time than doing this next month and trying to, to fit it in.
Thank you.
Finally, I'll note that you could share with the family, these master keys of the city are. Uh, these are master keys of the city, so they open the mayor's office, um. Hot rod car.
Building twelve, they open up building.
Actually, I don't, I think you can just go in there.
All the bathrooms.
Oh, that sounds good.
Every bathroom in the city, in every building. Um, so it's quite a powerful, you know, thing. Of course, they want one of those, so.
All right.
But we look forward to seeing you uh, next month as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity and the time and let me know what you need from me in the meantime.
All right, congrats, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so then let's talk quickly about the uh, Little League thing. I did pull up the letter. Um, I think I can share this. And again, this just came in directly to Kurt at like, uh, earlier today, so, but. Because we're running close to the end of the budget, I would do wanna put this up. Um. Says, I'm writing to you on behalf of the Insomnia Little League to express our concerns regarding the current state of our baseball field and to request your support in addressing those issues. As you may be aware, the Insomnia Little League provides vital service to our community by providing a safe and fun environment. For children to learn and play baseball and softball. However, our field house, lighting, batting cages, pitching machine and field safety have all fallen into disrepair. And it is becoming increasingly difficult to maintain our facilities. We're therefore requesting an amount of four thousand dollars to help us repair and upgrade our facilities. This will cover the cost of fixing the field house, upgrading lighting, repairing the pitching machine, improved field safety. Upgrading the field itself and hosting an end-of-year banquet for our players. In addition, we are. Committed to keeping registration fees low for parents to ensure that all children have the opportunity. Participate in our league. This requires ongoing maintenance of our concession stand, which is an important source of revenue for the league. Uh, and then it goes on. Appreciate your attention. Um.
So did you say we had the money in the budget for them?
Yeah.
Kurt said there was fifteen thousand approximately and that was a request for four and um, those other ones have been paid. And if you subtract the one that's pending, it's about um.
A ten left.
About ten thousand remaining.
So I'll make a motion to pay, give them the four thousand.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Tar, second by River.
Discussion. So, hey, Kurt, um, with field maintenance, are we gonna have an issue with? Public works, is there some sort of, is there any violation by having an outside? Company coming into improving the quality of the field or something like that?
Uh, I don't think so, as long as the work is done uh, during normal public work hours. Um, or if it's something that our guys are unable to do. Uh, so depending on the complexity of what they're talking about, but for four thousand dollars, I don't think it's gonna be anything too complex. Um, so I'll make sure that I talk with Jesus and I'll get that organized. And make it delicious. We'll loop in uh, Timmy Holman.
Yeah, just don't want, just don't want any issues in that, in that space. Otherwise, I'm, I'm good to go with it.
Yep, okay.
All right, um, trying to, so we had a motion in a second. Did we vote? We didn't vote on that. Let's uh. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, who was that?
Yes, Steven Adamowski.
One abstention, Adamowski, so motion carries. Um, thank you guys. Um. All right, I'm just flip over here. We have no resignations. Uh, we have one resolution. Um, and this is also in your packet, adopting and accepting the submission of a community investment fund. Twenty-thirty application for the Insomnia Copper and Brass Complex. Uh, Sheila can speak to that quickly?
Yep, very quickly, a grant opportunity for some uh, additional state funding. For Ansonia Copper and Brass and I'm keeping it vague for a reason because. Uh, in the process of composing the application as we speak. And there's no match to this, so. And I'm aware of, um, so that, um, you know, by saying yes, go ahead and. Apply, we're, you know, just taking advantage of the opportunity.
Okay, and you just need authority, Sheila?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Yaman in a second, who was, who, who?
Me.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, good luck and thanks.
Thank you.
Um, we have um, nothing under appointments. We already covered ordinance. Uh, the meeting will be the twenty.
Fourth at seven.
Fourth, seven PM, Zoom and uh. You'll get, you'll get the link from that when it gets closer. Um, we have, do we have any new business? All right, any old business? Any monkey business? All right, uh, before we go into executive session, I'd like to remove the, the final item, number six. Um, we won't cover that, so we have five uh, items listed under executive session. Tonight. The usual cast of characters, I'm assuming, John, Corporation Council.
Uh, Kurt and Sheila.
Okay, the alderman.
And Rhonda.
Oh, Rhonda Purina. That's exactly right.
Here as well, yep. Um, all right, so uh, can we get a motion to move to executive session?
Got it.
Got it from Kurt's. I don't think everybody, yet.
I was gonna say, we have everybody.
Four, five, six.
The other room doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, so we're good.
Executive session.
Second.
Motion to return to executive session by Rivers and second by Mamon, all in favor?
Motion. Motion to come out of executive session, not return to.
Yes.
From. It's returns to the real world. All right. In executive session, we had five items. First item, uh number one, Blight Leans. A Maple Plaza LLC.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor of taking no action?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Blight Lean B, one B sixty-eight Grove Street.
Motion to reduce the lien to five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Rivers to reduce lien to five hundred dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously, and number one, C twenty-five Pershing Drive.
Motion to take no action.
Second. Motion by Yaman, second by Mamon to take no action, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously again. Uh, item number two, Pachico versus City of Ansonia.
Uh, motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, motion carries. Item number three, Arms Unit Three A, full-time and part-time EMT supervisors collective bargaining agreement.
Uh, motion to finalize the contract and give authority to the mayor to execute.
Second.
Motion by Yaman and second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, three B, full-time, part-time EMTS collective bargaining uh agreement.
Same motion, Trish, motion to finalize the contract and give authority to the mayor to execute.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. No, item number four, police unit.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Yaman, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number five, potential sale or lease of city property, five A Ansonia Copper and Brass, S H W, five B, two Elm Street, five C, Silver Hill Road, and five D, W P C A.
Do you want me to do the motions individually or all at once? Let's see.
It's your call, whatever you want to do.
All right, I'll do them all at once. For five A, five B, and five, five C, and five D, motion to initiate the process to explore the potential sale of these four properties pursuant to two dash one twenty-five of the Ansonia ordinances and any other relevant state law.
Second.
Two dash twenty-five?
Two dash one twenty-five, Trish.
Two dash one twenty-five of the
Ansonia ord- Ansonia ordinances, and and any, any other relevant state law.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Yaman and a second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Yes, um, I abstain on on D.
I abstain on D also.
Okay, so on A, B, and C, uh unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
And two abstentions on W P C A.
Yep, and just to clarify, just one point on clarification, um, C is actually forty-eight Silver Hill Road, Trish.
All right, and and if, how many of you are there?
Well, hang on, so all voting were, I think there's eight?
And two are abstaining, so six?
Yes. So eight for eight, eight for
Does it pass?
Right.
Does it pass with six?
Yeah, six of eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, majority.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Item six, you took it up, right?
I kicked that off before we went. Motion to adjourn by Yaman, who was the second on that?
Me.
Uh, Ri- Rivers.
Yeah, yeah, he beat.
River. Thank you all.
Thanks.
All right.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Trish.
Night, Gracie.
Good night, Moon.
Good night, John Boy.
Wrong book.